The number you have dialed is not in service. Please check the number and try your call again. Thank you.
Hello?
Is this Bob?
Yep.
Okay, we got John.
Okay, thank you.
Where is Scott? Oh, no. That's funny, he's right in front of my face. That is funny. Well, I would almost like you to wave.
Watch your knee. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's study session. And I think we're going to get a presentation from HR today.
Mayor McFarland, members of the council, we're going to talk to you a little bit about expansion of a contract we have with a company called ESI. But just by way of background, a little bit, as the year 2000 came up and the first of the baby boomers started to retire, the impact on classrooms in around the state of Arizona became evident. And so legislation was proposed and passed by the legislature to allow the possibility of someone who had reached normal retirement under the provisions of the Arizona State Retirement System to retire and then be able to contract back into the classroom. It was kind of, it was called phased retirement and what have you. And so that legislation was put in place to be able to to kind of beef up the classroom teachers that were available. And a company called Smart Schools came to be, along with a company called ESI, to be able to do that. And through the years, that expanded beyond the schools into city and county government. And a companion company called Smart Works came to be. In January of 2020, mayor and council approved one of those third-party agreements for staffing services in order to be able to contract back our city manager at the time. And the proposal was presented, the contract was presented. And the council decided at that particular point in time to limit the ability to contract retired city employees, city of Casa Grande employees, with the city manager position only. But directed that we bring the issue back for further review at later date. And so we did that about a year ago in January of '22. We brought the issue back to you for consideration with the possibility of expanding that contract to include other city employees who might be eligible for normal retirement under ASRS to be able to contract back with the city and continue employment. At that particular point in time, there was discussion about the pluses and minuses of that. And the council decided status quo was the way to go at that particular point in time. But again, directed that we bring it back for further consideration. And certainly, we look at the world around us. I say from time to time that here in Casa Grande, we're victims of our own success in relationship to employees that are available out there because of the number of jobs that are available. And it has impacted us in different ways. And well beyond that, as we talk about some of our classifications that we call more difficult to recruit classifications that require some technical expertise or what have you. It's a highly competitive environment out there. There's no question about that. And so our position is that any tool that we can have in our tool bag to use as we consider recruitment and retention of our valued employees is a good thing. And so we're bringing back to you again for further consideration and discussion this issue of expanding the contract that we have with ESI to include the possibility of other city employees, city of Casa Grande employees contracting back and continuing their employment. That contract is available for use for employees who retired from other cities. And of course, those who may be retirees from other states. There's no constraint at all. But the ESI contract allows someone to enter into that contract under the terms of which they would continue employment with us and their pension with ASRS is not impacted in any way. We again think it's fair to say that there's never been so much competition for talent in the workplace as there is today. And we do struggle from time to time to fill some of those positions. The same as a year ago, we don't have anybody in mind, if you will, who might qualify for this over the course of time. There've been a couple of times when we've talked to individuals, but they were interested in leaving and leaving the workplace entirely. And pretty much that's what's happened with them. The contract with ESI would not require any amendment, but the enacting or the enabling resolution put the limits on how we can use the contract at that time. And again, it was just for the office, the position of the city manager. So again, the key concepts, and you all were involved a year ago in the conversation, some of the key questions that came up about how we were going to make a decision about eligibility. And we envision eligible employees would discuss that possibility with the department director, the supervisor. That would be made known if they were supportive of that in discussion. When the city manager would ultimately make the decision about who would or would not be eligible to contract back. And we're going to use some criteria, that the boxes that have to be checked in order for an employee to be eligible for consideration. And I've outlined those five factors for you in my staff briefing. I contrasted that in the last paragraph. I've talked about our Public Safety Retirement Deferred Retirement Option Program. And we talked about that. The drop program has been around for a long time, where members of the Public Safety Retirement System and police and fire, when they reach normal retirement, they're able to enter the drop program. They continue their employment. All terms and conditions remain the same, except they don't contribute to retirement any longer. And we don't have to match that. And their normal retirement benefit goes into their drop account. And it's credited with statutory interest, as a matter of fact. Well, in 2022, the state legislature passed an expansion of that program. And they added two years to the original five. And there was apparently a lot of negotiations about expanding that program. And one of the things that they did in order to make sure that it passed was that unlike the five years, which the employer has no choice about, the employee gets that benefit no matter what. The additional two years, the employer can grant permission or withhold permission to extend for two years. And so we sought out opinions from others, what other communities that were doing, some legal advice from attorneys we have access to about employment law issues. And we decided, we actually decided to follow the program that the city of Chandler actually put in place and basically said that all of those who wanted to extend would be able to unless there were certain conditions present. They had some disciplinary action or what have you. So unlike our proposal under the ASRS, where they would have to be these things in order to be eligible, on PSPRS, our program says that everybody's eligible except these things happen. So that's the contrast, if you will, between police and fire. So that's the program or the, as it would be envisioned for retirees of the city of Casa Grande, if you so choose, so chose, to expand the scope of the contract to include other city employees. Really, that's the basis of the presentation this evening. It's something that you're fairly familiar with because you heard this before. So we want to get some general feedback from you. If you were so inclined to change the resolution to allow its expansion of our current arrangement, we would be bringing that back to you at a future meeting. So before we open it up, I ask Larry if he has anything he wants to add.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. No, Scott, I don't think there's much that I'd like to add at this point in time. Certainly looking for some level of feedback and direction from the mayor and council. I know I've had individual independent dialogue with a couple of you related to this particular topic. And I think Scott does a very good job outlining those, the real-life scenarios where we have situations where we have a difficult time filling a position, where we've been out in the recruitment phase for months and having just a handful of applications that are submitted. I don't necessarily know that that would ever solve, that this type of expansion would solve that issue unilaterally. But at this point in time, at least from my chair, what I'm looking for is the opportunity to have any tool available and to be able to perhaps have dialogue with those employees in a case-by-case basis where we feel that they are leaving. Because we've had scenarios where employees have retired and they've gone to work at other cities under ESI contracts. That would be a good example of where I could ultimately see an immediate opportunity for us to capitalize on. But as Scott's pointed out, and as I've said to several of you, it's, I don't have a specific example of who or where or how at this exact moment. But really, it is just the opportunity to have the tool when that situation presented itself.
Questions, anybody?
For our clarification, Scott, if somebody is already in the drop currently and with the new two years added, are they allowed to add that on to theirs? Or are they already kind of grandfathered into the prior?
No, we went through a process where they were able to declare. So there was a window that opened. And certainly, all but one individual declared for an extension. And so all of our folks, at least that were in the drop program.
Okay, thank you.
So, and if you said this, Larry, I didn't catch it, but this wouldn't automatically allow someone to keep their job. We would still open the position in most cases? Or, you know, that, just in case, you know, to bring new talent in? But I know that there's some very specific positions we haven't got any stuff for. And I think that's what you're envisioning.
Right. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman. Certainly, there are different criteria that could be established, as Scott has pointed out. I was simply trying to outline a scenario that I think would, that this tool would be most utilized or could be most utilized in a scenario. I do know, and I believe Councilmember Lavender is familiar with, what transpires at our local school districts. They've written their policy that to ultimately create a criteria that allows employees to consider that in advance of retirement, I understand, right? So their criteria is more of a, it's toggled on so that an employee can elect to retire and go to work for ESI by, you know, essentially continuing with their work at the school district. In the case that, in the case that I was attempting to articulate, I see it being invaluable to us from a standpoint of a situation where we have those hard-to-recruit positions. And I'm not going to say there's a lot of those. There's a handful of them. Scott may have an exact number. But in my mind, that this would be a tool that we could certainly attempt to utilize when we were potentially losing a valued employee to retirement and were going to leave and potentially keep the same job at another entity.
And Scott, there's kind of two parts to this, right? There's the PSPRS piece, which is statutorily determined. And then now, we're talking about the cities piece for our salary employees. Okay. We'll make sure there's.
If I can, it is really our civilian, our civilian employees. This is, and it's the Arizona State Retirement System participants. So that's broader than just salaried employees. It's broader than just management and leadership. It's, it really is any employee that works on the civilian side that is not covered in the Public Safety Retirement System that works more than 20 hours a week.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Go ahead.
No.
Jeff, go ahead.
You know, I'm excited to see this. We have successfully used this program at both the elementary district and the high school district. And what Scott is describing tonight is very similar to the procedure that we use at the high school, where I have the final authority on these things. I think back to February of 2021. I had hit 30 years of service to the state of Arizona. It was not practical for me to stay as an employee at Casa Grande Elementary School District any longer because that's when you hit your maximum retirement percentage, which is 2.3%. And so my choice, if we didn't have it in place, I would have walked away and gone to another school district that would have hired me and paid me, paid me, then basically did this because they were on ESI. And Larry is absolutely right. We've had directors leave and come back because they had to go somewhere else. And we've had other employees. And the opportunity to keep people, to keep that longevity, to keep that continuum is important. If the people are not who we're looking for, then obviously, we don't have to say yes. But this is a benefit we offered our city manager because we knew how valuable Mr. Raines was to the city. It's a benefit our firefighters have through the drop program. It's a benefit that our police officers have through the drop program. And I just think it's a shame we don't make that benefit available to all of our programs. Because I can tell you, most of the employees that we have at the high school are not the teachers or administrators that go on this. It's the hard-to-fill support positions, where they have the opportunity now to draw double income when they struggle so much. When I went on retirement, I was paying 12% of my salary to state retirement. And the district was paying 12% of my salary to state retirement. And when I did it, I no longer pay the 12%. And the district is paying, I think it's 7% now. So we always did, we call it a win-win. The district's paying less for benefits for that employee. I'm paying less. I'm allowed to come back to work and that. And so I'm excited. Obviously, if it's before us, I would be in support of it.
I believe, I think it's a benefit for our city if we have it in place. And as Councilman Lavender said, we have the right then to say yes or no, depending on that individual, those individuals that are running. Is that correct, Larry?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Edwards, that would be correct. But with that being said, I will say that I, my understanding from past dialogue with the councils on the topic has really focused on managing the expectation that there's not this perception that everybody automatically gets to take, to take part in the program. And that's challenging to come up with a set of criteria that ultimately is going to create, you know, that is going to be utilized in this type of a program. But yes, in our thoughts would be that we would establish a set of criteria that ultimately would be utilized. And there would probably, there would very likely be some other types of criteria, such as if it is a position that we typically get, you know, 100 to 200 applications on, that would be something that we may elect to go out into the market and look for others as well. So we don't have the criteria established today. Scott simply put together a list of criteria that we had talked about with this body a year ago.
Lisa?
Well, I appreciate your insight, Jeff, because obviously, this is something you're very familiar with. And many of you are that work in, you know, government and schools districts. I've been in the private sector all my career. So this isn't something that, you know, I'm used to and understand and have, you know, had just experienced. So, but I know this has come up several times. And I definitely see the benefit of us utilizing this for, you know, for Larry, bringing Larry back. You know, I think the school system, to me, again, being on the outside looking in, seems a little bit different just because I know there's a, you know, high demand for teachers, retaining teachers, administrators. So I think that, you know, I understand why this is necessary. I do agree that we are facing some challenges and we do need some tools in our toolbox. But is this, is this really what's going to, you know, bring, you know, continue to bring talented people to our organization? You know, I'm all about retention and we have some fantastic employees. But my concern is if we do this across the board, you know, how are we going to look for those people that want to come into the city? And you're just going to have someone retire and automatically, there's no, you know, vision for them to be promoted because it's going to be, you know, the same person that's going to retire and stay within a certain position. I understand that it's up to, you know, the city manager's discretion, the manager's discretion. But that, to me, I'm, again, this could be great. This could be the tool we need. But I just don't feel that I personally have the information necessary for me to feel comfortable with this big policy change. I think that, you know, this, you know, I mean, you know, two-page, you know, report doesn't really give us, you know, numbers, you know? Like, what does this mean? You know, how does it financially impact the city? You know, it doesn't really tell us, you know, where, you know, how other cities? Is this what cities are using? Is this really what's keeping them? Again, I'm not, I am not against it. I just think that we can, there could be more information given to us. So when we see this policy change, we can answer to the community and those people that aren't city employees and government employees that don't understand this, that we can explain to them. So I would really like to see, you know, what cities are using it. You talk about the city of Chandler. So if they can maybe give us some of the criteria they use and are they, you know, do they struggle with getting new people? That, you know, the succession planning? You know, how are they promoting within? How do people internally that are outside, you know, several levels down from a management position, how do they feel about, you know, where they stand in the city? So that's my concern. Again, this could be a great thing for us, you know, to keep employees, to get new employees. But I just, I just am a little concerned about, you know, where, you know, we are with promoting from within and bringing in new talent and, you know, just, you know, just the vision, where we want to go. I mean, I think young, not young, I'm not going to say young. New ideas are good and important, whether they're coming from another city, whether they're coming from another organization. That's important for us, too. So that's where I am. I would just like to see a little bit more of like an administrative direction, you know, on, you know, this is what the policy is going to look like. This, you know, we talk about criteria. What will that criteria look like? So then, you know, it's pretty clear. I just would hate for Larry to be the one that's, you know, everything's coming across his desk and he's, you know, he has to answer to every employee, whether they're eligible or not. So I just get a little concerned about that. So just a little bit more information.
This is just a preliminary kind of finding. And so I'm sure that, Larry, your plan is to come back with a little more detail in terms of what that criteria looks like. Scott, I know you've talked to Chandler about that. I also want to remind everybody up here, and Lisa, you and I both have been in industry and business, private business, all of our careers. I was in for 36 years. And we don't have systems like this. Because we don't have retirement systems like this, right? So this is, in government, which I've learned over seven years, the retirement systems are quite different. And so they put limits on the employees. Like, they hit 30 years and they don't have an option that's a good option, okay? So they have this, they've set up this ESI-type system to sneak around the system, basically. But it also helps the employees then to come back into maybe a company, a city, school district that they live at and they enjoy working at. So I think it's an option. I think it's a good option for the city to have this opportunity and expand the piece that we have already created for the city manager and expand it to the other employees. I think that's what you're asking about, Larry, right? Is that we expand that policy that we established and include other employees within the city of Casa Grande. And so if we can see some examples more specific in terms of Chandler, maybe other cities that are doing it, how they're dealing with it, what parameters, and I think that's your plan, is to do that. This is just an exploratory opportunity to bring it back to the surface because we are having some issues. We're losing employees. And we're losing employees to the private industry today. Larry and I talked about it today. We've lost two or three employees to private business. Some of them getting a $57,000 pay raise. So, you know, these are issues that are real. And so we need to have all the tools we can to try and solve this issue, at least today. And that could be changed down the road by a future council, if they so desire.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just point of clarification. I don't know whether the city of Chandler offers this for their non-public safety employees or not. I was simply saying that we patterned our drop extension program after the city of Chandler. And I've, I try to draw the parallel. Make sure you understand that ASR, the ESI contract has nothing to do with public safety.
Correct.
But the drop program has been around for 20, 25 years, where a police officer, a firefighter, a sergeant, or a captain, or a chief can retire on Friday and come back to work on Monday. And there's no change in compensation, except they get a raise because they're not paying their share of retirement anymore. So to me, the parallel speaks somewhat to the issue of, for all of the employees in our public safety departments, they have the advantage of continuing their employment post-retirement. And so we don't have that on the ASRS side. Don't know that we will ever use this if we expand it. Don't know that we will ever use it. But it does, it does, we can get additional details on who ESI has contracts with. I don't know that we're going to be able to get any information on how many times they use it or don't use it, or what classifications they use it for or don't use it for. It's simply, is a concept, is simply as something else to use that historically, the city of Casa Grande has not been willing to do at all. And then in 2020, decided to do it for the office of the city manager only. And we talked, this is the second time we've come back with the concept about expanding it to other city of Casa Grande employees. If you work for a neighboring community and retire and want to come to work here, and we can contract you under ESI. Because if you retire within a year, you can't go back to work full-time for an ASRS. if you retire within a year, you can't go back to work full-time for an ASRS entity. You will impair your retirement. So, so in other city, anybody else can, can be used for. I went to, from here to the town of Florence, they already had ESI contract in place. I was their first employee under that, under that contract. So, you know, that, that worked out. I needed somebody to contract. I was in the same situation as, as Councilmember Lavender. They needed an HR director and it worked out beautifully. And, and so that's, that's the way it went. So we don't know, we'll, we'll bring back whatever information you want. But I don't know if we're going to be able to get the details of how extensively it's used and where it's used because it could be in place in other communities and they've never used it as we don't know that we'll ever use it. So it, it just, it's, it's a concept. It's just one thing that we would have available if it was, if it was convenient and necessary to use. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you. Mayor, I, generally speaking tonight, I would be against expanding this. I still have the same concerns that I did way back when we approved it for the city manager. We believed that we were in a very unique, but dangerous for us situation. And we carefully crafted this to be available only to the council and only for the, the spot of city manager. I, I'm still in that position. I, that's what I would like to see it stay. But I do understand people saying we'd like to see the criteria that it might be used under. I too would like to see that. And I don't know, that may, that may change my mind. My fear all along has been that multiple employees upon, upon reaching retirement age and service years would say, me too. And eventually, we're going to be faced with telling somebody no and, and we're going to have to be blunt about it that, no, this is not for you, even, even though X number of people have already done this way before. I, I don't want us to be in that position. And so I guess in the criteria to outline how and when it would be used, I, I would like to see some kind of a recruitment crisis that maybe we've gone through a recruitment, nobody qualified, has applied, and we're, we're, we're in a bind. We need to do something to get it through. I don't know how to write that, but, but I think that's what I would be looking for.
All right, some set of parameters then that would trigger the, like, emergency clause?
Yes, that under normal circumstances, we would, we would do a normal recruitment and see who applies. If we go through that process and it's obvious that, that this is going to be very tough to fill, maybe then we entertain the idea of invoking this return.
Okay. That's an idea. Something to explore. All right.
Thank you.
So you, did you all get the gist of where we all stand?
I believe so, Mayor.
Okay. Do you need any more information, Larry? Okay. All right. Any more comments from the council? Okay. Seeing then, it is 7 o'clock, but I'm going to call for about a five-minute recess and then we'll start at 7:05.
You look so like you're glowing. A little stunned.